Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance. It'll be led by Alderman at large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we're so blessed and thankful to be here tonight. Lord, we thank you for this special day, special time of year, Lord, where we get to worship your birth, Lord. We're so thankful that you decided to come to this earth and forgive us of our sins, Lord. And I just pray that you would be, have your hand over South Haven during this time of year. In your name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. We have a motion of Alderman Hoots. There are second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Jerome. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly. They've been printing out the old. I apologize. I'm so sorry. That totally just threw me off. So, I'm so sorry.
Do we finish the roll call?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries. Next on our agenda is I fifty-five Main Street Beautification Project. Our Planning and Development Director, Ms. Whitney Cook.
Uh, yes, the items that I handed off to everyone just a few minutes ago, um, we have two different sheets of paper and, uh, basically the mayor, myself, and Christie came up with a plan, um, as a new city beautification project. We usually have one large project a year. This year, we wanted to take and enhance the I fifty-five and State Line Road interchange in the beginning of the sound barrier wall that you have coming into South Haven, uh, from the Memphis area. So, um, both of those are in different locations. The one you sh- the one you see that says South Haven and it has the abstract painting of the orange and the blue, that's meant to kind of mimic the South Haven Charger colors that are conducive to the West End. I mean, that's the, that's our high school. So, that is planned to go on the noise barrier wall that's right here past City Hall. Um, it's very large scale. So, as you see it there, I know that we were talking that it may be a little busy. Abstract is the what you have to do with that because there's a, a deviation in the depths of the noise barrier wall. So, you can't get really defined with it. So, you had to do more of an abstract drawing. Um, but essentially those walls are twenty-foot hall, high, and I think that, uh, estimated length is going to be about three hundred feet. So, basically, when you get right past City Hall, um, the goal is to draw your attention over to that area where you see it's South Haven. And like I said, it's representative of the South Haven Charger colors. Uh, the other one you see is more of a banner-type, uh, design, and it says South Haven on one side, and it says established nineteen eighty. It's more of a classical look, and that will be on the, uh, the overpass on both sides of the actual interchange down here. So, when you're looking at the lights, waiting for traffic, going east and west, you're going to see it in navy blue and white over at the top. Um, like I said, it's an enhancement. Uh, we usually use it for landscaping and things of that nature, but we did run into, um, a mural designer who is, uh, local. Well, I wouldn't say he's local. He's local to the Mississippi area. He's done a lot of work for, um, University of Mississippi, a lot down in Madison. Uh, he's got a good portfolio of government work. Uh, we met with him, came up with kind of a design criteria. He came back very quickly with some beautiful designs. Uh, the three of us kind of worked together with him and came up with, uh, what you see proposed in front of you tonight. What we're asking for is, uh, approval of the contract, uh, with this gentleman. I believe it is on the items on the agenda. We do have an estimated cost for both of them, uh, but it all is done by price per square foot. Um, so we would like approval to move forward with, uh, the sound barrier wall and the overpass mural for this year's budget under city beautification, which we do have, uh, budgeted for this, for this year.
Now, question, which overpasses would the, this one go on?
That will be right here at South Haven. I mean, it's State Line Road and, um, fifty-five. So, it'll be where the light is on each side of the-
On State Line Road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You'll see that right there along-
But just on State Line, not on any of the others? Okay.
Our goal was to start, um, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, we, we've tried over the years to improve the first impression. You know, when you, when you leave the state of Tennessee on Interstate fifty-five and you come into Mississippi, the State Line exit is obviously the first one. Uh, so that's why we put, you know, our first monument sign was, uh, there, but, uh, because the greater the land, you can't put the monument sign where you really get I fifty-five visibility. You obviously get it when you get on the ramp. So, we're still looking to improve that look, and as we talked about in prior meetings about, you know, having the tower removed and, and putting a monument with, uh, with the three flag poles, we think that would be a grand, uh, entrance, uh, into Mississippi, and then this just enhances it even more. So, until we can get the other, you know, us doing this just really adds some life, you know, to the original, um, you know, original, uh, interchange in South Haven. But it's, it's, uh, we want to start here and then, uh, possibly we do something else, but, uh, the third phase, and we, I didn't want to get ahead of you, but the third phase is our court building. Uh, we're renovating that, as y'all know, and then on the, the northern wall of that is ideal. You can see that from the interstate. So, the phase three of this would be to, um, paint like a collage of the history of South Haven, like our special places that we've noted with our historical marker signs. We would have reference to that, just, just to celebrate original South Haven, like all the old spots, and that's why we chose to go, you know, with the orange and blue colors. Um, because it's, I mean, this was South Haven High School, you know. I mean, I'm not the only one in the room, and Whitney, you're coming along so well, by the way. Not, to not be from here, you're really coming along and you're, you're becoming a South Havenite, I think.
I appreciate that.
And, uh, so at one, at one time, there was no such thing as DeSoto Central Jaguars. I mean, we love them today. North Point was in Tennessee. Uh, SBC is on, uh, Holmes Road, uh, in Two Lane at one time. Uh, so at one time, it was the South Haven Chargers, and that's all it was. So, we want to pay tribute again to our original part of our city. That's, that's the reason for the orange and blue design there. Yeah.
Plus, it sounds like it's going to be, you'll see the sign, and then the school's right there.
Yeah, well, it will-
Good point. Exactly. Yeah, because when you're going seventy miles an hour, once you see the sign, then the school's going to be right there, too. That's a great point. We didn't think about that. That kind of ties in with it as well. And then the overpass, it just, it dresses it up, and I know y'all been to other places, and I keep using, uh, the University of Mississippi just because it's a place that I'm familiar with, but on, uh, Highway six, when Ole Miss went through a major beautification project, they started, um, adding so many different things. So, they engraved the overpass. So, like, when you're at, uh, Old Taylor Road and, and some of the others, I think the first one is where it is, maybe, oh, it's either Old Taylor or the, um, the Coliseum Drive. But it has, uh, the University of Mississippi engraved in the overpass. It just adds character to it. It's just kind of cool. You know, just, it, again, it just, it just screams that we're proud of who we are, you know. So, that's why I love this project, and I hope that, uh, y'all will agree to this contract.
How much you got the cost?
It's broken down in the contract. It's by footage, depending on how big. They'll have to look in there and see, but it's within budget parameters. So, Whitney, have it-
Yeah, we've got some estimates on it. Basically, the sound barrier wall, like I said, it's very large scale. It's about twenty-nine hundred square feet. Uh, that, all the labor and execution of that, uh, design is a hundred and forty-five thousand. And then the overpass, uh, is at sixty-one-six. We currently have budgeted in our city beautification, uh, line item is two seventy-five, so we're, we're within that.
And then the phase three would be outside of budget. So, what we'll do is just, the plan is to push that back to F five twenty-seven. Anything, is there anything else to add?
No, I'm just here for any questions.
Okay. Is there a motion to, um, approve?
So moved.
The contract? We got a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Payne. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis? Alderman Cleveland?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes. Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is, um, again, we left last meeting, we had a discussion about medical cannabis, about possibly opting in. And so, the next, uh, what we accomplished at the last meeting was to determine if we were going to opt in, what that would be. Like, it, there's all kinds of, it's very broad. Uh, you know, you have cultivation, you have research and testing, and then you have dispensaries, which are, uh, just the actual marketing and sale of medical cannabis. So, we left that meeting with the understanding, if we did choose to opt in, it would just be for, um, dispensaries in the medical zone. So, our city attorney was given direction to prepare, uh, an ordinance for that, and, um, so the update tonight is that has been, uh, prepared. So, then it's, it's up to the board, uh, if, when you're ready to take action. It is, is there anything else that would need to be done before, uh?
I mean, yeah, my draft is, uh, an ordinance, um, which is, uh, obviously in your packet. Um, it basically sets forth the, um, if it will just be opting in, if you want to opt in or dispensaries. Um, it includes the requirements for the city clerk's office and the checklist that will be made, that will be needed. Um, I sent those documents today to the city clerk's office, but I think our email or city emails are down. I don't know if those are rip. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I don't know if that got through. Also, um, it, under, under state law, you can do a time, place, and manner ordinance. Um, the ordinance under state law, though, can't be impractical, or impractical makes, uh, a dispensary be able to operate. So, you opt in, your ordinance is, needs to be, um, just regulating time, place, and manner. Um, so the ordinance would require them to have the entity to have a department of health inspection, a department of health permit first. Department of Health is overseeing it from the state level. Um, it would then come to clerk's office and the planning office, make sure they're in the threat zone, make sure the permit, uh, uh, has been satisfied with the department of health provide, um, the site plan and the, um, requirements that set forth by the planning office and the command of ordinance, um, including the security measures, um, along with allowing for inspections, um, and, uh, the survey of the property. Also, we'd need to, uh, like I said, provide the, um, uh, the fees that would be required. Um, it would be a two thousand dollar application fee, um, annual renewal of five hundred dollars. Then the, uh, uh, it would be allowed to be open from seven AM to seven PM. This is just what that ordinance is now. I mean, let's say this is ultimately how y'all want to proceed with it. Monday through Sunday, um, but as I said earlier, doesn't allow, as the mayor noted, does not allow for cultivation, manufacturing, indoor processing, um, research, testing, transportation. Disposal facilities wouldn't be allowed either. Um, it just makes also apart the state permit, the state statute should be also apart the ordinance that's set forth by the equipability section. Uh, enforcement would have the regulations and penalties, uh, for violations of the ordinance, um, including, um, fines that's set forth and allowed by state law. Uh, and that'd be the enforcement section. Um, there would be a continuing penalty for continuing violations as we do with other misdemeanor violations for continuing, uh, violations of those ordinance, um, that's in fines. Um, and then finally, it would just also, uh, set forth the, uh, uh, checklist, like I said earlier, the checklist, checklist of what's required, which would be a pretty extensive amount because based on the regulations, um, by the state, we need to have those things in our clerk's office to make sure everything can comply to it before we can actually issue the permit. And including the letter from the planning department, which we've noted is in the commercial medical district, and if any of those items aren't in there, it would not be a life audit. So, that's the overview of the ordinance as, as it sits designed, just as a proposal, um, based on direction from last meeting. Um, so I think at that point, we would also need to finalize, uh, which I have worked on those and provided some, uh, checklist and permit requirements and documentation that the clerk's office could use as part of the, um, ordinance itself and the permit requirements. Happy answering any questions? Do you have something you need to do?
What all would be required of the clerk's office and, and, and any additional items or education, or what would be needed as far as that goes?
It would be, they would need to make sure they had all the information. Well, we'd have a background check, um, that's re- that we would do, and so they would sign the applicant report, or sign a background check, which is consistent with what other cities are doing. Um, also, there would be, um, the site plan that they would need to provide with the planning office. They would need to provide the security measures. They need to provide all the, the permits they receive from the state, um, along with the certification that they are, the required amount of distance from, um, the other dispensaries or the child, or churches or daycares, um, including any waivers. So, that you can't get a waiver for that from the entities, but they would need to provide that as well. Um, so it would just, it would be like a, just a documentation for the clerk's office to have that, um, all in a row, and then also to elaborate inspections by the planning, I mean, by the, uh, city police and, uh, city code, um, on an annual basis to make sure everything's in compliance with the statute. I mean, with the statutes, obviously, and with the ordinance as well. So, that, it'd be a couple of forms for them to fill out and then have that information to the clerk's office. Clerk's office would then have, uh, thirty days to review and then issue the permit after that. In the event a permit's not issued, you have to provide some type of due process. So, the applicant can always appeal to the board, and then from there, appeal to, or applicable courts based on the, you know, they feel nothing just or is, uh, guided by, under the ordinance and the state statute.
Nick, I got a couple of questions. Uh, are we allowed to stipulate what kind of building, like a freestanding building, uh, you know?
I think it is a time, place, and manner. Uh, you have to have a time, place, and manner. So, I think you could put that in the ordinance. Now, if I say that would hold up under the impracticability statute, I don't know, um, because you, right now, the way it's drafted, you have a commercial medical district, and that's what we's owned before, uh, a year or two ago, whenever that was. Um, within that commercial medical district, people can go, a dispensary can be located. Um, as it stands now, uh, you could, I think, make some adjustments by saying it has to be a standalone building. Um, I think that would fit into a time, place, manner restriction, but I, it's, it's, uh, you just can't make it to where it would not allow for dispensaries to be authorized in that area or make it to where it's not impractical for them to operate in that area. So, I think you could, um, include that language in the, uh, statute, meaning the ordinance. Um, but it would just have to be, the enforceability would then come back to how much does that really allow for a dispensary to operate within that district or in that zone. So, that's something that could be, if the ordinance could provide that language, you could revise that and include that in there. Um, but the issue would be, does that then create a concern or a, uh, not concern, but does that then create an issue from the standpoint of not allowing the dispensary to really operate or open in an area within a commercial medical district?
So, it could be potential litigation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we going to be on to a course then? I mean, is this going to be similar to the, the way with, it is with liquor stores? I mean, the state's going to control everything, you know, with your, their will, or is it?
No, I think we, we, well, as long as it's within, we, we're controlling it within the zone, um, area, so we have some, from the standpoint of a liquor store, you do have control of the liquor store from the standpoint of where it's selling. Um, and the, and the, um, footage from a church or school. I do think you control this from the standpoint of the city commercial medical district, and it has to be within a certain amount of feet within that commercial medical district of each, within each store or within certain daycares, schools, um, churches. But does that mean that you can control the zoning? Yes, you can control that within that zone, but if they meet the requirements as it stands now, um, of the fifteen hundred feet or thousand feet, I can't, uh, from the, on the state statute, that's going to be allowed in a commercial medical district. So, it's controlled, it's, uh, controlled within that parameters of the commercial medical district and the state law requirement.
You can't contradict state law.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Nick, is there any, uh, limit to the number of these that can be in the district?
Uh, no, I mean, only thing it's limited by within the district is by the deep requirement that is set forth for state law. So, to the mayor's point, we can't, I mean, we can't come in and say, you know, we're going to make it further restrictive within this many feet because that would be in, contrary to the state law requirements. So, we obviously-
So, if ten, if, if ten met those, they could, and I know that ten won't, but theoretically, ten could go into that district.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, yeah. I mean, now, I, let me say this. I don't know if that's theoretically or not on the standpoint of, I don't know the feet requirement. I mean, I know what the feet requirement is. I don't know how many could actually-
Could-
If they're following the thousand feet.
They won't allow, but yes.
Right.
Okay, yeah. So, I just, that's something I just have to map, I mean, have to map out where those schools are and the zones and where each one can be for a thousand feet. Now, you could try and look at, you know, doing something by a standalone building, um, but, so I can't, you know, that's something that, uh, I just don't, I just don't know how, how that. It's such a subjective term as far as making something impractical. I don't know, that's basically going to be a case-by-case basis in the way that practicality works.
So, you couldn't say, no shopping centers or-
I'm not saying you can't say that. I'm saying you can put that in there, but does that then according to what makes something impractical? I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, I, I would say-
You don't know if it'd stand up to litigation?
Yeah, I mean, sub- it's subjective terms. I mean, yes, my point being is, you could say, you know, it only has to be a standalone building. Um, but does that then make it impractical to operate within a commercial medical district for, you know, a certain number that need to come in or want to come in? I can't answer that because I haven't, I don't know how many standalone buildings there are in that area. I just haven't had a chance to. Yeah, I don't know, and I don't know how many shopping centers or where they could actually be located to make it to where that argument would be, well, now that it's only standalone, it makes it impractical for more than two to be there. I, I just don't know the answer to that because it's only going to be based on, it's such a subjective term. It's going to be based on how many standalone buildings could actually operate and comply with the requirements set forth in the same law.
One last question for me.
Yeah.
As far as the medical district, is it, can that be challenged? Can, I mean, I mean, what's-
I mean, anything, obviously, anything I would be challenged. Um, I do think the commercial medical district did a good job when that was owned, when y'all did that as far as taking into account where, uh, um, the best use in place would be because it does provide the, um, access and allows for it to be within a central part of the city and provides a pretty broad space and district to allow it to operate. So, I don't, yeah, why do you think it'd be, you know, I mean, we live in a litigious society. Well, anything can be challenged. I don't, I think the commercial medical district is wide and broad enough for where it's, it does allow for this to, if, if the board should opt in, a dispensary to be able to operate, or dispensaries to be able to operate freely within the city without making it impractical for the use and placement of an entity that wants to be a dispensary. But when you start restricting it more within that zone, that's what I just, it's, that's a very subjective criteria. Obviously, we would have some arguments of why we're thinking that's why we want to do that, but can I guarantee that that's, makes it impractical or non-practical? I don't, there is no guidance for impracticalness.
Uh, under, and I apologize, I mean, I know we had email issues today, so this is, you know, the first time I've been able to review it. Uh, like, under inspections?
Mm-hmm.
We mentioned Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Can we extend that through Monday through Sunday?
Yeah.
For all their business hours?
As far as when you can do an inspection?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was just there, but based on working on it, yeah.
I mean, I hate to, you know, second guess it right now in front of all of this and-
Oh, no, no, please, y'all, y'all-
I mean, we could put it off so everybody could review it. I mean, if that's a thing.
That's fine. I, I, that, I, I'm, I was just dra- getting something drafted up, so that's what-
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah. Y'all want to review it some more and we can discuss it next thing. Well, y'all tell me what you want to do because, um, I'm not, like I said, this is just a draft. It's something that, that can be considered-
Sure, no. It looks good. I mean, it's just-
But if you want to make changes and revisions, and then the clerk's office wants to review other documents that they'll need to be familiar with, that's fine, too. I, I just want to have you something to review, to discuss, and think through, um, y'all, I'm moving. However you want to do it, y'all. Uh, I work for y'all. I'll tell them.
I'd rather have some time myself just to look it over, just to make sure.
I mean, is that good with everybody?
Well, this is just an update, so unless anybody's making a motion, if you're going to make a motion tonight, then make it. If not, if there's no other discussion, we'll move on.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, is there a motion to take action tonight on this, uh, ordinance that's been laid before you? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is, uh, contract for, uh, for our event concessions.
I apologize. I probably should have been up here for the medical marijuana. The, uh, contract for the event concessions, um, this is a current, our current contract is with, uh, Event Concessions, Inc., um, with this, uh, Bank Plus Amphitheater. As part of the, um, renewal of the contract with the Civic Center Board, uh, we're going to start using their in-house for the concessions for next year. I think that'll be more efficient, uh, or based on our parks recommendation and Civic Center, uh, recommendation, that'd be more efficient. The current contract we have expires in March of next year, so they weren't even under contract for next year's performance, uh, or performances. Um, so that being said, the question, the, uh, request- Um, so that being said, the question, the uh request tonight is to cancel the contract with professional services agreement based on the sixty-day termination clause and that their contract that we had with the prior board can't bind this board, so we just need action to take, to move forward with that to end it now as opposed to March, so that the Civic Center Board, or Civic Center um can start moving forward with their operations for concessions.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our audit engagement letter.
Yeah, this engagement letter with the Jarrell Group is the same entity that did our um audit last year. Um, as part of this year's audit, Caleb Flowers has worked uh getting this negotiated and, and done, has done a good job of having them to make sure they meet the requirements for our timelines. As you recall, this past year's audit wasn't completed till September, but this year, under this engagement letter, Caleb's had them insert language that says that the completion will be done by April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, the cost of engagements is forty-five thousand dollars, so tonight, need approval for the mayor to sign the audit engagement letter with the Jarrell Group for the FY twenty-five audit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for our police uh vehicle purchase.
Yeah, this is just authorization for the police to purchase vehicles from the Missouri Highway Patrol. It's six twenty-twenty-two Dodge Durango's, an amount of thirty-three thousand dollars. It's an intergovernmental purchase, so it does allow for them to do it pursuant to thirty-one seven thirteen uh Mississippi Code. So tonight, need authorization for the purchase and the mayor to sign the resolution authorizing the purchase.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion?
Do you have to have an interlocal for this?
No, not, this is not a uh donation, so it wouldn't be an interlocal, it'd just be a resolution for purchase.
We bought six for thirty-three thousand dollars?
Thirty thousand each, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hey, that's a good deal.
Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for surplus in the fire department.
This re- yeah, this resolution will surplus three, hire three vehicles from the S, the fire department in accordance with seventeen twenty-five twenty-five Mississippi Code.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda, our contracts for our IT department.
Yeah, we've got two different contracts tonight, or there's three, but one, two of them go together and one separate, so just do it all at one time, if that's okay with the board. But um the first one's just authorization for the mayor's office to have a, a printer and the contract for that and the purchase. The second one is also a contract with Barracuda, it's renewal for the firewall subscriptions um that are required for the city email backups and storage. So um, and that is an amount of thirty-four thousand five forty-three um per year on a three-year basis. It is a renewal. Um, and they have complied with what we've asked for, so tonight, need authorization for both of those contracts to be signed. Uh, Michael Norris, um, the head of IT for the city.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for a sole source purchase in our utilities department.
Yeah, this resolution will authorize sole source purchase of the Badger pumps from J.R. Stewart. This is what we, um, which is a vendor for uh central pipe supply. Uh, the sole source allows for us to get a, a price decrease, but they're the only people, or the only entity that will sell the pump that we, or authorize to sell the pump that we need for our sewer system that corresponds with our automatic meter reading and our sewer um infrastructure. So, this is uh needed so that we can have the right uh pumps and meters that will comply with our sewer system and will be an authorized sole source based on sole source letter and the information they have provided, which will be included as exhibits to the resolution. So need authorization for the mayor to sign these resolution, or to sign this resolution along with the exhibits um attached to the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion among the board?
Are there any properties?
Do we have the list of the properties on there? Michael. There are no properties? Okay. Okay.
Well, never mind.
Okay, we'll move on then if there's no properties, okay. So next on our agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Coog.
Yes, our first application is for um a design review. Uh, you see highlighted right there on the southwest corner of Church and Gatwell, it's actually just west of the CBS Pharmacy right there. Two buildings on site, one is a single-tenant building which is set to be the Ace Hardware uh that we approved through a site plan a few months ago. This is the design review package for that. Uh, there's also a three-tenant office building that will uh be adjacent to it on the same site. Uh, if you can look at your design review package, basically, they have taken kind of an old farmhouse design and kind of brought it in nostalgic for the Ace Hardware. Um, obviously, it was something the Planning Commission was very fond of. He did mimic that design with the other building as well, so they flowed very well together. Um, they did put um a nice landscape package together. They also did all of the parking lot lighting um as the decorative acorn lighting to kind of help in with the old-time look of the building. Uh, we just had a couple of uh comments regarding the size of the landscaping uh to be increased where it requires it in the ordinance. Um, otherwise, it was viewed very well by the Planning Commission. They vote, they did vote unanimously in favor of it to approve with those minor comments.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number one on the planning agenda as presented tonight.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion?
Whitney, is there access from Gatwell beside the CBS right there?
There is a shared access point that is already in place, uh, and it's partly on CBS and it's partly to the south. That will carry over and connect and basically do a L shape, so y'all have access to this lot on Church Road, and then y'all have access behind CBS.
I've noticed that, so I was wondering, is that?
Yeah, very good, yeah, very good circulation for the site.
Any other discussion on item one? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis. Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is for subdivision for seventeen point nine acres of property. This is gonna be on the south side of Goodman Road, just east of Elmore. All the areas you see identified in blue is the seventeen point nine acres, and it does have the Kia and the Honda stores both on there. They're both dealerships owned by the same entity. And uh, when the land was purchased and the original Honda came into play, they did have excess parking to the south. To gain access to that area, they had to obtain three additional parcels that were in two other subdivisions. So, this subdivision application in front of you now is a way to clean up title and to merge all of them into a single ownership lot. So, we will be removing a lot from the, uh, what is it, the Jennings Rayburn subdivision. We will be adding it into the Bell Office Park subdivision. So essentially, we will have lot five B and five C. Lot five B will be the um Honda site. It will be nine point nine seven acres, and then we will take it and make an additional lot five C, which will be seven point nine three acres. That'll be to the east. I know it's confusing. Nothing will change on the ground. This is for title work and to allow the separation of the two dealerships. Um, but it also just cleaned titles and vacates the other subdivisions of the, of the land they were already purchasing. So, um, after some deep discussion at the Planning Commission and we settled the confusion, they did vote unanimously in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number two on the planning agenda as presented tonight. Second.
On item two, we have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion?
Whitney, what's that little notch on the, on the southwest side, right under five eighty-seven?
I can't.
Yeah.
Uh, that is probably a cell tower site.
Okay, yeah, I think you're right.
So that would be obtained in an easement. It will not, they don't get their own lots, they simply get an easement onto a larger lot, so.
I think you're right, I think that's what I, alright, thank you.
Does this mean that they're wanting to do something with lot five at some point?
That, so that has already been primarily built out. That is surplus parking for, yeah, behind the Honda and the Kia dealership. Um, there is some open land just a little south of Jennings Drive, Jennings Drive, which is also a portion of it, and that is just for additional surplus parking if in event they ever need it, but we used it right now for a buffer line between that and Beaumont Estates.
Okay.
Any other discussion on item two? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Yeah.
That motion carries.
Our final application is also a subdivision application, and this is for a revision to the College Road Business Park subdivision. This is going to be on the southwest corner of College Road and Gatwell Road. Uh, lot one is the State Farm building that's on the hard corner. If you will remember, and you should have it in your package, um, the owner of Precious Paul's Veterinarian Clinic came in and did a campus-style setting and got approval to do a twenty-four-seven emergency hospital, uh, a doggy daycare facility and a dog park, and he bought all of the remaining property from that subdivision as well as what he had um presently where the vet's office is. Um, what he has done with this now is taken that five acres and broke it down into the four lots. Each entity will have its own individual lot, so the veterinarian clinic that's already there will be on one lot. The emergency vet will be on one lot, the doggy daycare will be on one, one lot, and then the dog park itself will be on one lot. So this is again, just clean title work. Uh, it is compliant with all of the ordinance set forth for commercial properties and was recommended unanimously for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we approve item number three on the planning agenda as approved, as presented tonight.
Second.
On item three, we have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That's it?
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Um, as always, uh, either next meeting or the first meeting in January, I'll put together a, um, a year-end review like, like we always do. And like I always say, when you, when you stop and you start putting that together, you realize how much changes in one year. There's a lot of stuff that happens over the course of a year. There's a lot of stuff going on right now in the city that's uh good, really good. Um, but anyway, I'll get to that uh next meeting or the following one, but tonight, uh, just wanna talk about just what's at hand now. Uh, Christmas is upon us. Uh, our parade is this Saturday at ten AM. Uh, same route going down uh Main Street, finishing at City Hall. Uh, there's gonna be, the Chamber of Commerce has really stepped up and has a lot of other fun events for the kids. It's gonna be here at City Hall uh at the end of the parade. So, uh, just encourage everybody to get out and celebrate a great South Haven tradition with a Christmas parade. Um, our Southern Lights tradition is underway now, uh, where you can uh take your kids and uh ride through beautiful Central Park and look at the Christmas lights. As y'all know, over the last few years, we've added some features to that, so we freshened it up. It's really special and uh, uh, the kids love it. So it's gonna be open until uh December thirty-first. Uh, the money that uh is collected there goes one hundred percent to charitable organizations. So, we've had some questions like, why do we not give a discounted rate, you know, so you can go multiple times? The answer to that is because on any given night, it could be a different charity, so we don't wanna, you know, we wanna make it fair for all the charitable organizations that are working the gate for us. But it's a, it's a great tradition, beautiful Southern Lights. Um, our tree, y'all know, we put us up a, um, to use a, you know, a southern term, we put us up a showing-up tree last year. So, uh, we waited, you know, we tried to be efficient with our money. I'm not even gonna tell you how much that tree costs, but, uh, no, I will. What, what was it? Whitney? Uh? It's a lot. So we delayed for a lot of years. We tried to grow real trees, and, and I'm not one to admit failure, but I threw in the towel. I finally gave up that it is just not meant to be for us to have a natural tree on the City Hall property. So we just uh finally, last year, put up this beautiful tree, but, but uh, it's gorgeous. It's, it's super nice, and it reminds me again, talking about old South Haven, uh, for those who were kids in the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties here, you know about the um, the huge tree at the Southland Mall on Shelby Drive? So, if you grew up in this area, at, at some point, uh, your mom and daddy said, hey, tonight's the night, we're gonna go check out the tree, and, and all the kids piled in the car, and we went and looked at the beautiful tree in the Southland Mall parking lot. It's not as tall as that one, but it reminds me of it, and I hope it does other people too, cause it was a very special tradition for South Haven people back then. And so I hope this tree reminds uh people of that as well. We added some things this year with our beautiful monument signs. We have a citizen that uh reached out and said, hey, could we decorate the mon- the beautiful brick monument signs that we put up? Could we decorate those for Christmas? I said, hey, it sounds like a great idea. So Whitney made that happen, um, and then our utilities department, Ray Humphrey and Humphrey's and his team, uh, they went and helped us with all the, all the snowflakes and all the um, the monument signs. So we have uh wreaths on the monument signs that will be lit up soon as well, so we're, we're taking a lot of pride in beautifying our city at Christmas time. Um, last thing, I just wanna mention some things, and I've never done this before. I know our police department does a really good job uh trying to communicate with the public with the challenges that come with the, with the holiday season. And so I just wanna kinda, you know, reiterate that, that um, it gets wild in December, you know, in so many ways. You know, you have um people out Christmas shopping, when you have people out, uh, you have gifts in the car. Uh, it, it increases, you know, uh theft from automobiles, uh shoplifting, shoplifting challenges are higher, you know, in the shop, uh shopping, Christmas shopping season. Uh, obviously, people are out Christmas shopping, so there are more people on the road. Uh, there's a lot of things going on. So I just wanna kinda reiterate that to people, you know, we wanna keep everybody safe, but, but having a safe city, we all kinda gotta do our part. Let's be smart with that, so like if you're Christmas shopping, lock your doors, don't leave your, you know, your uh, uh Christmas presents in plain view, cause some, there are people out there who will take those, so please lock your doors, be smart with that. Um, the other thing too is um, you know, just safety with Christmas trees and candles. Um, I love candles, I know a lot of people love candles, but uh this is the insurance nerd in me, but I gotta tell you, one of the biggest um starters of house fires, candles and space heaters. Those are two of the, two of the things that cause the most fire. So, enjoy your beautiful Christmas candles, but be smart, you know, don't put them next to things that are flammable, give them their own space. Uh, be safe with your candles and your space heaters, and uh, you don't wanna, trust me, you don't wanna go through a house fire at Christmas time. Um, the last thing, and then obviously, if you have a, if you don't have an artificial tree, if you have a real tree, you know, you gotta keep some water in that thing, because it becomes a fire ready to happen. If you don't keep that thing watered, you leave that thing up for about two weeks, uh, it becomes a fire ready to happen. So, um, so just take that advice and um, to keep your family safe. The other thing is about traffic, you know, do, do we ever talk about traffic in South Haven? Everybody's always got an opinion about traffic, so I'll start again by saying what I always say. Um, traffic is inconvenient, but traffic is a sign of success, okay? So, uh, the, when you need to worry is when you have no traffic, because nobody wants to be in your city and you have no economy, okay? We have a great economy in South Haven. We have a tremendous retail economy, which means that you're gonna have traffic, you have people out there. So, I would just encourage everybody to not only be safe with their driving, uh, but be smart. If you've been here a while, um, there are, if you don't know, then email me and I'll, I'll tell you a few secrets. There's ways to avoid uh the big traffic hangups. There's all other routes that you can get north and south and east and west in this city by staying off. Everybody knows about Goodman Road, but that's not the only problem. We have a lot of uh big areas that are problems for traffic. So I would just encourage you to be smart with that, take a different route, and when you do that, you help the city, cause you, you help uh eliminate some of the, you know, the troubled areas that are heavy uh traffic areas. The other thing, and you may think I'm crazy about saying this, again, it's the insurance nerd in me, but. The other thing, and you may think I'm crazy about saying this, again, it's the insurance nerd in me, but if you can avoid a left turn, think about, just avoid a left turn. There's so many ways, like Whitney and uh Alderman Payne asked about the, the hardware store. So when the Ace Hardware is built, do, do you want to come out and try to make a left on Church Road right there at Church and Gatwell? That's just, uh, I'm just telling you, if you try to do that, it's a matter of time until you get T-boned. Somebody, you're going to have a wreck when you try to take a left at busy intersections. The simple way is just go back out by CBS and take a right and then go the other way. You could, we could name a, a ton of other locations like that, but when you're on Goodman Road or you're on Gatwell um, or, or Church Road, if you can avoid any, taking a left turn at an unsignaled area, that could save your life, okay, so just um, y'all know, you see it, you see people waving somebody through and you're like, oh, no, is it, this is just a collision waiting to happen, you know, they're peeking around the other lane and one person's waving them and one person's saying no, and it's just, it's just a total nightmare, y'all know it. So I just encourage everybody, I don't know how many people watch this meeting, but listen to me, avoid taking left turns at busy areas without a signal, okay, and you may save your life. But anyway, that's all I got. I'll stop preaching, but we'll move on, and next on our agenda is our donation docket.
Yeah, just a donation tonight from uh Texas Gas, um, for a thousand dollars, five hundred for the police, five hundred for the fire department. Just need authorization to accept the donation.
I'll make the motion approved and thank you for Texas Gas.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. I have it, motion carries. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Do you have anything on the city attorney?
No, I know that one, can we add a utility claim to executive session?
Sure.
I just realized that we all have to go to the...
Mayor, before we go on, can I, I need to catch you before you get off the mayor's report. Any update on the, the noise and stuff coming from the power plant? Were we able to get anything accomplished on that?
Yeah, like I've told, uh, told the public um over and over, there's a pending plan on that, yeah. Yeah, this is probably not the, because it's, you know, an economic development, this is probably not the appropriate place to discuss that. But yeah, I've explained that um repetitively, that, and had many meetings, uh, that is being addressed as we speak. Um, uh, there is an expensive solution to that, but there's been no uh, no pushback at all in doing that, so like I've told everybody, we will solve that problem. Uh, that's the uh promise that we made when the development came. Uh, we will stand true to that and we have a pending solution to that. Okay, so next on our agenda is the um, city attorney's legal update. Do you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pass on, I'll add utility claim when we get to the executive session, so next uh, on our um agenda is the utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is to approve one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the claims docket in the amount of two million three hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-eight cents, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda is the, to determine the purpose of executive session.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say no. The purpose of executive session this evening, police department personnel, litigation, a utility claim, economic development within the city, and interdepartmental personnel with no action, so is there now a motion to declare executive session?
Sub moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. I have it, motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.